We have, first item is the flag salute, if you'd all join me.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alex, if we could have the roll call, please.
Chair Paul.
Present.
Vice Chair Barbe.
Present.
Commissioner Barber.
Here.
Commissioner Macara.
Present.
Commissioner Spear.
Present.
And Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. First item tonight is approval of the minutes from the April 25th, 2023 meeting. Do I have any questions or motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Chair Paul, let you vote.
Abstain.
Vice Chair Barbe.
Approve.
Commissioner Barber.
Approve.
Commissioner Macara.
Approve.
Commissioner Spear.
Approve.
Commissioner Wyler.
Yes.
Vote is six, five zero to approve and one abstain.
Thank you. Next item tonight is written communications.
Good evening, Chair Paul. Uh, thank you. Adam Finestone, city planner here. Um, there are a couple of pieces of information that have been placed on the dais for you, both related to item two on tonight's agenda, and they will also be read into the record as we go through the hearing.
Thank you. Next item is oral communications, if anyone would like to speak on an item not on the agenda. Alex, do we have any speakers for oral communications?
We have not received any flags for anything. So if any of members of the public do have one of these written requests and would like to make an oral communication?
Thank you. Next item of business is our public hearing tonight. This is Project PL 22-0134, PL 22-0154, the Ash Street subdivision and annexation. First, I'd like to ask if any of the planning commissioners have any disclosures they need to make? Seeing none. Staff report.
Thank you, Chair Paul, and good evening, Commissioners. Ivan Flores with the Planning Division. I'll be presenting on item two, which is a request to subdivide an approximately 5.09 acre site and annex it to the city of Escondido. The project will be made up of 20 lots, with 19 being for market rate and one reserved for very low income. So it does involve a density bonus request. The project is located in the suburban general plan land use designation as shown on the left, which allows a maximum density of 3.3 dwelling units per acre. It is located within the pre-zone R110 zoning district, which the 10 stands for 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. The vacant parcel is approximately 5.0 acres in size, surrounded by residential uses all around and is bounded by Ash Street, Lainer Avenue, and Stanley Avenue. As stated earlier, it is a, has a zoning designation of pre-zone R110, which means that sometime in the eighties, the property was pre-zoned, but it was never annexed into the city. So that's why we see the pre-zone designation. Upon annexation, it will take the R110 zoning district. As you'll see in the staff report, a density bonus proposal was provided by the applicant in its attachment two of the staff report. Here we have the development standards that are, they are requesting to either waive or reduce. On the left, you have the R110 zoning district and you have what's being proposed. And I guess we'll just, you know, go down the row. So in the general plan land use designation, you are allowed a 3.3 dwelling units per acre, but the propose, proposal would amount to a 3.9 dwelling units eight per acre due to the density bonus. They are also requesting a reduction in lot size. So instead of 10,000, it would be 6,007 square feet would be the smallest lot in the development. And the following development standards are really to accommodate the reduced lot size, so that, you know, each lot would be, would be buildable. They are also proposing a reduction to a 10-foot front yard setback. However, that would only apply to one of the lots, which is Lot 13, to accommodate all the other remaining lots would conform to the 15-foot requirement. The project also includes a consent, incentive or concession. The applicant requests that the city eliminate the requirement to underground overhead utilities. And this incentive and concession is based off of the percentage of affordable units that they'll be providing. And so they would be allowed at least one incentive based off of affordability. Access to the property site will be taken off of Lainer Avenue. The average lot size is approximately 7,549 square feet. As stated earlier, it's a subdivision into 20 residential lots and two lettered lots, one for open space, which is located off of Ash Street. It's a Lot B, and this is mainly due to the existence of a San Diego County Water Authority easement. So this will not be developed. It will be undisturbed throughout the project. And the project will only require a dedication on Lainer Avenue as the Ash Street and Stanley are at their ultimate width. So the applicant will only be responsible for street improvements on those sections. And they'll also be responsible for improvements on Lainer Avenue. But that's the only area that requires a dedication of eight feet. The project also includes a open bioinfiltration basin, which is Lot A, which is adjacent to Lainer Avenue. So here we have some site sections that were provided by the applicant. And so Section A is if you were viewing the property, this, if you're reviewing the property from the westerly property line looking towards Ash. And Section B is looking west towards Stanley, which would be approximately this area. The site section is not shown here, but it's approximately in this area. And Section C, which would, as you can see, covers Lot 16 through Lot 6. And you'll see Ash Street right here. And so that would be approximately in this area right here. The grading design conforms to the requirements of Article 55, which is our grading and erosion control ordinance. And no grading exemption is required. The applicant has also provided a conceptual landscape plan. They will be required to place street trees off of Ash, Lainer, and Stanley Avenue. They're proposing a mix of coast live oak, African sumac, and sweet bay. And obviously, this is conceptual and we'll review landscape plans once they move forward with the construction of the units. City staff received a total of three comments on the project. The comments had the following concerns related to the stormwater basin, impact to views, biological impacts to wildlife and native plants, and public involvement. And I believe those comments have been provided to the planning commission prior to the meeting. The project has an associated mitigative negative declaration as required by the California Environmental Quality Act. The document was released for a total of 20 days from March 30th to April 19th. During this public review period, we only received two comments. However, none of them raised issues regarding the adequacy of the environmental document. Those comments were mainly concerned with the affordable units that were being provided for the project. No revisions were necessary to the document as a result of the public review period. Total of 19 measure, mitigation measures are proposed, and those are Attachment C of the resolution, which is the mitigation and monitoring, monitoring and reporting program, the MMRP. Based on the analysis in the staff report, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution Number 22, 2023-09. As Mr. Finestone stated earlier, a memorandum was provided to the planning commission, and we would recommend that the commission also adopt those modified conditions as outlined in the memo. And that will conclude staff's presentation. We are available, and so is, and so is the applicant.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak first? How much time would you like, sir?
Just three minutes plenty. Good evening. My name is John Kaye. I represent the applicant. Just a bit of a background, we were the developer and assembler of the Pradera and Lexington projects that were developed about 10 years ago. We did an assemblage of about 10 different properties. And then we also had another tentative map that was approved by city council in February off of Conway, a 56 home. So this is essentially one of the last pieces of what I want to call a pseudo-master plan and basically filling in what was developed, started 10 years ago. You know, as with the previous maps, we think this is a good design. It's got cul-de-sacs. Around, in this whole area, it's got a history of, was a rural area, but has been developed. There's a variety of lot sizes. You'll have 10,000 square foot lots. You'll have 4,500 square foots to the north, 7,500, 6,500 to 7,500 to the east. And these lots average 7,500 square feet. And as was said, it was 3.9 per acre. They still are relatively large lots for the market, which tend to be the largest lots now are like 5,000 square feet. We do have the one affordable home. We are still planning to work that with Habitat for Humanity, who is also doing the 10 affordable units off of Conway. As I think you know, they're just a wonderful organization. This will be restricted income, just the one unit on one lot that's the same size and a similar type house. And I think that's pretty much it. I will say that we have our environmental consultant, Peter Carlson, here if there's any questions for him related to environmental or biology. And then I just want to say thank you to the staff and for you for considering this project. We agree with the staff report and the recommendations, with the exception of one that we don't agree with is the application of the North Broadway deficiency fee for this project, as we're not in the district. But I will let Dave Ferguson elaborate more on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak will give you three minutes to talk on the subject. But before I ask the public to come up, do the commissioners have any questions of staff?
Yes, I do, but I see Mr. Ferguson is approaching. So should I ask my questions of staff first and ask Mr. Ferguson to be seated, or can Mr. Ferguson speak?
Why don't we ask questions of staff first?
Okay. Okay, we received a late letter, almost a small petition, asking the city to address the potential environmental issues. Could you, and I know staff has done this, but could you, in case some are here, are present, could you please briefly explain how these were addressed to help go on the public record and to reassure those residents?
Thank you, Commissioner Barber. So as a part of the project, a mitigative negative declaration was prepared. I believe the letter that you're referencing had specific issues with the wildlife, wildlife potentially on the site. I believe Mr. Carlson, who is the environmental consultant for the project, did do a biological assessment of the site in November of 2021. And there are mitigation measures that are proposed to address any imp, potential impacts to the wildlife at the site. But we could defer to Mr. Carlson if you would prefer.
No, that's satisfactory, thank you. My next question is regarding the addition of the North Broadway deficiency area, fees being applied to this project. Could you, first of all, could you explain to me when was the North Broadway deficiency area first adopted by the city council?
Yeah, the original North Broadway deficiency area was adopted in, I believe, 1995. And the, and you know, a map was developed with that over the areas that were in the city at the time.
Could you define its purpose and how it affects the properties that would be included in the area?
Yeah, I wasn't directly involved at the time, but my understanding is that the, you know, this was a, like was mentioned earlier, quite a rural area. Horse properties and the like, not a lot of infrastructure, deficient in water and roadway, traffic, and storm drain, infrastructure. And so to help cure those property, or to cure those deficiencies as this area was developed in the, in the broader sense, you know, a deficiency area was identified and then the fees were, were negotiated and developed as subsequent development occurred to help cover those deficiencies.
What would the fees be charged per unit on this project?
We based it on the, the most recent deficiency fees that were negotiated and approved by council. And in fact, in some of the same developments that the applicant mentioned surrounding this property, they were 12,500. And so that's what we have, have placed in, in the condition.
When I, when I look at the map of this neighborhood, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this parcel, this property does not appear to exist in the area. It does not, it does not appear to be in the deficiency area.
In the 1995 map, that, that is correct. Neither would any of the properties that the applicant mentioned having been annexed surrounding this. None of those properties, that what we, what we would call Pradera and what we would call Lexington, at the time it was called Zinnor. You know, none of those properties exist on the map, the 1995 map. But as a condition of annexing to the city, they also were required to enter into development agreements and annex, effectively annex into the North Broadway deficiency area and subsequently pay the fees.
Okay, so those projects agreed to those terms?
Yes, and so if I could just clarify, the reason that they're, they're not on the, the map, the map is drawn within the city limits. The city drew a map around the area within the city that was that deficiency area. The property we're talking about now and those surrounding properties that Owen was just mentioning are in the county. And so as a condition of, as a condition of annexing into the city, the city is asking them to pay their fair share for those facilities.
Was that a policy adopted by the city council? That in order to be annexed, you must agree to be incorporated into the deficiency area and pay the fees? Thank you, dear.
Yeah, one second here. Yeah, and I don't have the year, but the, the growth management ordinance, I believe it was.
Well, the group, sorry, but the growth, growth management ordinance is Article 68 in the municipal code. But I don't think that's, that doesn't state the policy that we're talking about. I, I don't know that the city council ever officially adopted that policy. It's, it has been the city's policy and it has been.
It's been our practice, but it's not official policy. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Those are all my questions.
Any other questions of staff?
I have a question. There's a request that the city.
Thank you. There's a request that the city eliminate the requirement for underground, under grounding the existing overhead lines. Just would like to ask the reason for that, number one. And number, and number two, I guess, is more of a city question. That is, other developments in the community, have they been required to do so?
So I'll let this applicant speak to the, to the first question. But yes, typically, an applicant, if they're proposing specific type of project, they are required to underground. However, they are able to request the waiver, however, they need to pay a fee in lieu of undergrounding. In this case, the applicant is requesting the elimination of that requirement to request underground and consequently, the requirement to pay the fee. But typically, it is required that they underground. However, there is a waiver process for them, as long as they pay the in lieu fee.
Okay, so you did answer that in terms of, I'm thinking of the other, the other, the other developments there. They don't have overhead, they have underground. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, the, the surrounding projects, I believe, for the most part, under grounded their utilities. There might have been a, a pole here and there that wasn't feasible as the, you know, as it went offsite.
But generally, this would be an exception in the neighborhood where they would have overheads and everyone else is underground.
Of, of the areas developed in the city, there are other surrounding rural, either, either in the county or even in the city that have not been developed in the last, you know, since the under grounding ordinance was adopted in 2007. You know, that would have overhead still.
Understood, but in this particular neighborhood, would this be unique?
Yeah, I mean, just based on, yeah, the surrounding recent developments all have under grounded, yes.
Thank you, that's helpful.
So I want to follow up on that. So the, is the under grounding that is going to be waived on the main streets? Or is this, the, the street that the 20 houses are going to be on is also going to not be under grounded?
Yeah, no, I believe the new, the, the interior utilities are all underground. This, the under grounding ordinance speaks to existing overhead utilities on your perimeter or that might cross your site.
Right, so, okay, so we're not, they're not going to underground the existing lines, but all the new stuff going down the street, that will be under grounded?
I believe so, that's my understanding.
So kind of following on this line of discussion here, clarification on, on the under grounding and the, and the waiver that is being requested. This waiver is a part of the density bonus, state density bonus request. Is, is that correct? That's my understanding.
Yes, that's correct. It's actually a concession or.
Concession, I'm sorry, you're right.
I know it's, and they are entitled because of their, their affordable units, they're entitled to one concession incentive. And that's what, this is the one they're requesting.
So does the concession also include not, not having to pay the in lieu fee?
Yes, because it's, yes.
Okay, I want a clarification on that because that was kind of my understanding. And then a follow-up question on the, the fees to be paid on North Broadway. Have those monies been spent over the years as, for the improvements that they were intended to?
Yeah, I can't speak to, to all the monies. Some projects, you know, in effect, paid the fees and then were reimbursed as they did offsite improvements that, that cured some of these deficiencies. Some have gone to, you know, some pretty major improvements like water tank upsizings and replacements. Some large, like the, the large storm drain underneath, you know, Reedy Creek used to flood Broadway with your average storm. Broadway would, you know, you, for half a day, you wouldn't be able to go down Broadway. And so that was, you know, that was one of the major drainage improvements. I don't know if you can say all the monies have been, I, I don't have that.
But they are being spent, that's not being held on to and not being utilized for the purpose that the fee is being collected.
Correct.
Okay, and then one other question with regards to the under grounding. I noticed that, you know, up, up the road in front of the school, the under grounding wasn't, didn't occur. So those overlying heads are still there, overline, overhead lines are still there. Is there any ability to use some of these funds that are being collected for North Broadway to help underground those lines at some point in the future? Or is that not, or is that not an available option pursuant to why, the reasoning for the collection of the fees?
Yeah, I've, I, everything I've seen or everything, you know, when I was, been involved, the North Broadway defees did not include paying, you know, under grounding of overhead utilities. That was not considered one of the deficiencies. The under grounding ordinance, so for projects that choose to request a waiver, usually it's, it's just infeasible to underground the poles in some cases in the lines and have paid the fees. Those fees do go towards under grounding elsewhere.
Understood, thank you. And then one more clarification. Frontage improvements, are, are those curb gutter sidewalk on all three sides? Is that a part of this?
So what you have on Ash right now, you have the curb and gutter. And that was one of the improvements constructed by the, developed the Pradera to the east. And I can't remember, but they may have been reimbursed some of their North Broadway deficiency fees for that construction. The, and so on that side, they will be constructing sidewalk only. On the Lainer and Stanley frontages, that's a full new structural section paving, curb gutter and sidewalk.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ferguson.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Dave Ferguson, representing the applicant Escondido North. I think this is the third time this year I've appeared before you. First was in January on the Hallmark 102 unit project, just a few blocks to the west of this one. And the second time was in February for Escondido North, other project over on Conway, a few blocks to the east. Both of those were subdivisions, both of those involved annexations. And on both of those, staff initially requested that the North Broadway deficiency fees be imposed on them. I objected to both, and in both cases, that request was withdrawn before the hearing before you. This one just became to my attention yesterday evening. I have lodged an objection and had several discussions so far with Ms. Delano. We've not yet been able to resolve this. I am hopeful that we will before the city council hearing. But as of tonight, we have not, so I'm required to state my objection for the record. The objection is twofold. First, as you've already identified, this project is not within the established deficiency area. That in 1995, and that established that it's actually a moratorium area. The reason it was established is that the, by state law, the city may not require a project to pay for curing existing deficiencies. That's long-established California law. So there was a legal fiction where this area was created and, and a moratorium was imposed upon it. However, the developers were allowed to voluntarily enter into development agreements whereby they agree to pay the North Broadway deficiency fee, and that would be an exception to the moratorium. And some, some projects have voluntarily, for other reasons, agreed to pay, voluntarily pay the fee. However, cannot be legally required. The second objection is that this request to annex is basically a tantamount to expanding the. the moratorium area. That, there are very specific requirements for doing that, which require studies, findings, and public hearings, none of which have taken place. Further, under the new state laws, SB 30, cities are not allowed to expand or impose moratoriums without state approval, which has not been obtained in this instance, and it can only be obtained if the city can show that there is a danger to health, safety, and welfare, which there is not. So, we don't believe, one, that the project, these fees can be imposed on the project because they're not within the area, and we don't believe the city has followed the proper procedures for expanding that area, and therefore cannot require annexation to it. So, I need to put that on the record for you tonight, and once again, I'm hopeful, as has been the case in the past, that we'll resolve this with the city attorney's office prior to the council hearing.
Thank you very much.
Could you clarify what you're stating are the proper procedures that the city itself should be going through?
When the North Broadway deficiency area was originally established in 1995, staff did extensive studies in which they identified all of the works of public improvement that needed to be done. They did cost estimates as to what the cost of building those improvements would be, then calculated what the build-out population of this deficiency area would be, how many units remain to be built. And then they divided the total cost of the necessary improvements by the number of units that were left to be built to come up with this fee, which was originally 12,000, not to 12,500. Those are the kind of studies that need to be done before this area is expanded, because right now, if we're going to expand it, what the infrastructure needed is going to be, what the number of build-out units is going to be, none of that has been determined. There have been no findings, there have been no public hearings on it, and therefore, expanding the already established area would be improper.
If you're arguing that there should be a public hearing on this issue, are you suggesting a separate public hearing outside of this project, or that at the, when this reaches the city council, the city council should consider it and incorporate it in that motion?
That has to be a totally separate hearing focused on the deficiency area and the moratorium area. And until that's done, this project can't be forced to join it. It would be a lengthy process. I think this took the city a couple of years to come up to establish the deficiency area the first time, and it's only been updated. It is a very arduous process. I think the last time it was redone was about 2013, 10 years ago. That's when the fee was raised to the 12,500. And so it would be a long, arduous, independent process, but now, I'm not sure, I don't think it's even possible because of the new government code, which forbids the establishment or expansion of moratorium areas without special findings and state approval.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other public speakers? So, come on up. You have three minutes to address this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'm currently, my name is Keith Campbell. I currently live on Saddle Place, which is directly along the other side of the houses that'll be there. A couple of the concerns I have is Leonard Avenue in the portion from Ash Street to the end, which was Vista, has been closed off. Couple of my concerns deal with the construction area that will happen, and the timing that goes on with the school that's there. A lot of parents park along those lines and things like that, so I am fearful of congestion, things like that during my times to go to work and things like that. Secondly, there is a drainage bed that goes along the back line of the property from Leonard to Stanley. Obviously, we had unique rain situations that happened this past year, which caught us, the Reedy Creek area on Rincon to flood, in turn, causing a drainage area that we had to flood. And if that area on the corner, which will be the new roundabout, and Leonard, is a drainage area, will that cause the area to flood if it does indeed rain like it did during that time? And then, third, are we going to open again the area that we closed off because we were having high crime area at the edge of Leonard and Vista? Kind of in that little triangle where there's a couple houses and the other, I can't think of the name of it now, I apologize, but there was crime, and that's the reason those barriers went up. So those are my concerns for this going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
This is Julia Treptow. She lives at 605 Collins Terrace, and I'm Kathleen Babcock.
I'm concerned about my house at 605 Collins Terrace, which is right down below North Ash. And this past winter, my house got seriously flooded, and my septic system got flooded, so I'm really concerned if they put all those houses up on North Ash, I'll have a terrible flooding problem. So I'm interested if they're going to do any grading or anything so that I don't have such a flooding problem down at my house.
Her home is located, if you look at the property line, it's down a slope, down a hill, down a grade, and then her house is kind of at the bottom of that grade. Just this past winter, I pulled 100 gallons of water out of her living room in one day, and another 100 gallons out another day, and that was just from the recent rains. So when the previous speaker talked about flooding and the flood plains, that is a serious and real concern for Julia. So that would be something to take into real consideration, especially when looking at that area, which is, has absolutely nothing on it, and where is all that water going to go?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm just concerned with the flooding problem in that, in my house, in that whole area there, there's just a real flooding problem, and there's a real septic problem too.
How long have you lived in that location, Julia?
I'd say I've lived there about 40 years.
So you know that property and that land, and that, how the water ran off very well?
Yes, I know it very well. So are there any plans to grade it, or?
Yeah, we'll ask staff to address your concerns.
Okay.
You'll hear, you'll hear some answers.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Quickly, can I get your address again?
605 Collins Terrace.
I'm 80 years old, and my hope and plan is to live in that house until I die, and so I don't want to move, or, because I'm handicapped, and to be, and moving would just be, and I have pets, so I just want to stay in my own.
We just don't want to have to deal with the flooding again. And if that, if this happens, and there is, there are already flooding issues, we're going to be in big trouble, as will the other homes along that street.
Also, you know, what are they going to do about parking? Their Collins is just this little street, and you know, there's a lot of traffic coming from that junior high that's up there, that middle school that's up there. There are lots of parking problems along that street, of the kids coming from that middle school. What are they going to do about all the kids in the parking from that school?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So can you address the concerns about the drainage and the recent rain, and those issues?
I'll defer to Mr. Tenel for that.
Yeah, it took me a minute to locate the Collins Terrace, but I am familiar somewhat with the topography out there. Collins Terrace sits, it's, it's a private street, I believe, up Ash. And when I say up, it's up gradient from the project, probably 20, 30 feet or more above, as far as gradient-wise, above the project. So I would not anticipate, you know, the project having any kind of drainage impact in this direction.
Not at the base of her, so that, you have Collins Terrace, so you turn left, you go up a little bit, and then the whole street just dips way down below that level. So it's actually below the level of that field.
Yeah. But the project will be draining, like you saw on the plan, the basin is kind of the collection point, for the most part. They, so basically, the whole project drains in that direction. So I, like, there again, the project sits below, at or below Stanley Avenue, so I just don't see drainage from the project going northward.
Right. Okay. And the other neighbor does live in that direction?
So, when that project, Saddle Place Lexington, developed, they built a brow ditch and a storm drain system, you know, kind of across their, what I'd call their easterly boundary to intercept the drainage from, the kind of sheets across, you know, the project site. The major drainage is actually conveyed in a very large storm drain in Lainer Avenue. So what they experienced prior to the project, it would just be the sheet drainage that's intercepted by their brow ditch. This project will now kind of act as a double interception. The street itself will now intercept a lot of that drainage. They are, you know, so they're basically collecting all their drainage and taking it to the basin. And then from the basin, it will go into that large storm drain that's in Lainer.
Thank you. Were there any other public speakers? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the hearing. After those comments, do you have any other questions for staff?
As the site currently sits, and the topography that's there today, this site has sheet floating that's more or less from the north to the south, which would be the opposite direction of where Collins Terrace is located. So even in today's conditions, this, before it's even developed, this property is flowing in a southerly direction away from Collins Terrace. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would agree. Yeah.
And with the improvements that are going to be conducted out there, would it be a better situation for storm drain management than it is currently sitting as a vacant piece of property?
Yes, they are, as far as the, you know, the drainage to the west, to the Saddle Place, like I said, they now intercept all that drainage that prior, the project's brow ditches and storm drains had to intercept directly. They now, you know, other than maybe some very slight fill slopes or slopes on the edge of their property, now take the drainage to the basin, for the most part. And so, and then detain it back to, or retain it back to, you know, its undeveloped peak flow rates.
So, as it relates to Collins Terrace, it would appear that there's other drainage issues that are going on in that general area that would be contributing to, of flooding of this particular home? And is it within the city?
You're talking about on Collins Terrace? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they're, you know, those are some of the drainage issues that, you know, have existed in its undeveloped condition, in this whole, in this whole area.
So I had a question about the exterior of this 20 homes. What are the neighbors going to see? Is it six-foot block walls?
So, at this time, the applicant is not, will not be the builder for the site, and so at a later time, they will be required to submit what's a design review. And so at that point, we'll know the fine details for construction, and what the houses are going to look like, what perimeter walls are going to look like, but at this time, it is solely for the subdivision of the site.
What is staff going to require at that, at that point in the future?
So, we don't necessarily say, hey, you've got to do this or that. We look at what's provided to us and review that for compatibility with the neighborhood. If there are block walls, for the most part, in the area, that's likely what we would recommend. If it's wood fences, probably that kind of thing. So compatibility with the neighborhood is typically where we would go.
Very much. Anybody else?
Question for our attorney. Could you speak to, I guess, I guess my first question maybe isn't to you, but the North Broadway deficiency area, the surrounding neighborhood, is it within that area? In other words, if someone were developing this site on an adjacent area that is within the city, would it be subject to the deficiency area requirements?
Yeah, I mean, staff might be better to answer that, but my understanding is yes, that is the case. I don't know if we're able to pull up that aerial view, and to see the areas surrounding that.
Do we have anything that's a little bit zoomed in on this, or not?
Unfortunately, no. No, this is...
Okay. But it is my understanding that the surrounding areas are subject to that fee, or have been, if they have been annexed in from the county, they are paying that fee as a condition of the project approval, so.
Okay. That's helpful. And what we're saying is, hey, if these people were in the city, and the neighbors, they would have to do it. And the city's bearing burdens to annex and add a load to our facilities as well, correct?
Correct. And just to be clear, we're not talking about annexing this property into the North Broadway deficiency area. We're not talking about doing that. That would require, as Mr. Ferguson pointed out, a public hearing and findings, if the city wanted to expand that area on the map. But because this property is being, the request is to annex it into the city, the city, it's a discretionary approval, the city has every right to require it to pay a fee its fair share to support the facilities.
Understood. Thank you.
I would like to ask staff, would this project be aggravating the existing situation? Would this staff, would this project be contributing a problem? Are we compounding the situation in the deficiency area by approval of this project?
I mean, every project adds traffic, every project pulls on the water system, every project drains to the drainage system.
But to the significant levels to add this fee? I see two commissioners...
That's what the fee's for. So the deficiency fee, it's, the intent is that a fee like this offsets the incremental increases, right? So each, you know, yeah, one, two, maybe even 20 homes in and of themselves, might not be a huge deal, but when you have... might not be a huge deal, but when you have 200, 400, et cetera, those numbers start to add up, and if you don't look at them as each one of them comes through, then you get to a point where you're really behind the eight ball on that.
Yeah, and that was another thing, I mean, part of the, my understanding and what I've seen witness happen is that the North Broadway deficiency fee helped really unlock development of many projects that, particularly projects that were large enough to have an impact, but it was maybe just a percentage impact or a... And so together, this, this helped finance and helped take care of some of the projects. Some of the projects actually did have impacts and had to take care of them. And so, you know, the cumulative, a lot of times it was cumulative because a lot of these maps were running simultaneously. And so, you know, that's, you know, so as they annexed, and even though they were outside the boundary, as they annexed, it was a requirement to enter into a DA, you know, to, to basically help take care of all the deficiencies and/or mitigation measures in some cases, so.
So I just want to be clear, the planning commission doesn't really have jurisdiction over the development agreement, right?
So in this instance, because the project has been in process and there was not a development agreement up till now, we have not identified that as a need, that's why the fee that we're discussing is a condition of approval. Regardless whether it be the condition or a DA or whatever that might be, the planning commission acts as an advisory body to city council on that.
Right, and so this, and so this will go to the city council?
Absolutely.
How about a motion, guys?
I have one other, hopefully, discussion. This relates to a question and a comment. And let me pull up my notes real quick, if I could. And it relates to, bear with me here. So, there's a request here for concession. This concession relates to the overhead wires. As I read Section 331413, standard incentives in our city code for new residential construction, I believe it says this, "The decision-making body shall grant one density bonus as specified in subsection B of this section and/or incentives or concessions as set forth." So, the 5%, which is represented by one very low-income household, gives a density bonus and/or a concession. And so, the, this body has discretion to, I take it the city has discretion in that process? The discretion that I'm reading here is the and/or for incentives or concessions, meaning that we have the discretion to say, if you meet these requirements, you can get a density bonus and an incentive, or you can get/or an incentive. That's how it reads.
So if I could just clarify, and I apologize, I don't have that same language right in front of me, but the municipal code is intended to mirror state law, and state density bonus law requires that a certain bonus number of units be provided under certain circumstances. And then also that they are, the applicant will be entitled to, based on these numbers, in this application, they are entitled to one concession or incentive.
Is the or not a part of the state code?
There is, there is no discretion. I apologize, I don't have the language right in front of me, but, but that is the case. They are entitled to both a density bonus for units and one incentive or concession.
If the state code, if this mirrors the state code, I would suggest that maybe that is an option and not a requirement.
We can take a look at the language. I will, after this meeting, I'll take a look at the language in our municipal code and make sure it's correct. But, but we're very clear on the law, that the city does not have discretion here. They need to, that, the concession that they're asking for is a matter of right.
Let me ask another question, then, and that is, the, and that is what makes up a concession? The, the moon could be asked for as a concession?
There is a definition, if I can find it. Yeah, that's a good question, okay, hold on one sec.
Derek, I have that actually here from our muni code.
Excellent.
Right. So the definition of incentives or concessions means such regulatory incentives and concessions as stipulated in Government Code Section 65915K "to include but not be limited to the reduction of site development standards or zoning code requirements, approval of mixed-use zoning in conjunction with the housing, with the housing project, or any other regulatory incentive that would result in identifiable cost reductions to enable the provision of housing for the designated income group or qualifying residents." So I think the key part of that is the regulatory incentive that would identify, that would result in identifiable cost reductions, which removing the requirement to underground the overhead utilities would in fact do that.
So my question is, who has the discretion to decide the concession? Or the degree of the concession, or, who has that discretion?
Well, state density bonus law has basically taken discretion away from the cities at this point on that. As long, as long as the requested incentive meets that definition. Unless it would be a danger to the, I think it's public health, safety, or welfare, that would be the only way the city could deny that.
So Commissioner Spear.
I actually, I agree with you 100%, but we are in the minority.
I'm just trying to...
It says it's discretionary, and I believe it's discretionary, but we're in the minority. The city attorney believes it's not discretionary.
Thank you for your clarification.
Anyone else? How about a motion?
I have a motion, unless someone else has it. You do?
I motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Adam asked me to do one thing. We have a couple of documents he, like, read into the record. I almost forgot.
Yes, we received two written communications from the public over, throughout the day. The first one, it'd be from homeowners in the neighboring vicinity's. I apologize if I mistakenly pronounce their names, from Hussein Goran, Charlene Vargas, Ahmad Kasemi, Carol Legarki, Lynn Howe, and Keith Campbell. So the full discretion reads, "Dear the City of Escondido, San Diego County, and State of California officials, we, the undersigned residents of the surrounding neighborhoods, are writing to express our deep concern regarding the proposed construction project in the City of Escondido, specifically the development of single-family homes on the empty lot located north of Lener Avenue, south of Stanley, and west of Ash Street. We kindly request that the City of Escondido, along with relevant environmental and conservation agencies, give careful consideration of the impact the project to wildlife habitat and undertake necessary studies and surveys to assess the potential consequences. Proposed project site encompasses approximately 5.09 gross acres and is of significant ecological importance. Serves a vital wildlife corridor and plays a crucial role in supporting local biodiversity. Land is home to a wide diverse ranges of wildlife species, including potentially endangered or threatened species. We're prepared to provide photographic evidence to highlight the presence of wildlife in the area, further underscoring the significance of their habitat. Birds in particular rely on this land for nesting, while coyotes have established their breeding grounds in the area. Preservation of the habitat is essential for the survival and overall ecosystem health. Moreover, the wildlife inhabiting the site contributes to the natural beauty and the ecological balance of our community, forming an integral part of the landscaping that we cherish. We respectfully urge the City of Escondido to consider the following actions. Conduct environmental surveys and studies and surveys. Prior to any development, we request that thorough environmental studies and surveys be conducted to assess the wildlife population, species diversity, and overall ecological value of the proposed project site. These studies should include wildlife assessments, habitat evaluations, and ecological impact assessment. Wildlife habitat preservation. Based on the findings and the environmental studies, appropriate measures should be implemented to mitigate the potential impact of wildlife habitat. This may include the designation of protected areas, establishment of wildlife corridors, or implementation of habitat restoration plans. Protection of native plants. It is crucial to identify and protect native plant species within the proposed project site. These plants contribute to the overall biodiversity and ecological health of our region. Measures should be taken to safeguard these valuable plant species during any construction or development activities. Collaboration with environmental and conservation agencies. We encourage the City of Escondido to collaborate with California Department of Fish and Wildlife, California Coastal Commission, California State Parks, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Their expertise and guidance can greatly contribute to the preservation of wildlife habitat and the implementation of conservation measures. Public involvement and transparency. It is essential to ensure public involvement and transparency throughout the decision-making process. We request that the opportunities for public input, including open forums and community meetings, be provided to address concerns, share knowledge, and explore potential alternatives. By taking proactive measures to protect and preserve the wildlife habitat in the proposed project site, we can maintain the ecological balance and integrity of our community while accommodating responsible development. We trust that the City of Escondido shares our commitment to environmental stewardship and the well-being of our local ecosystem. We kindly request that you prompt attention to these concerns and actions that safeguard the wildlife habitat in question. Thank you for your consideration and dedication to the preservation of our natural resources. We are available for further discussion to provide additional information as needed. And the second item that we received was received from Ms. Maria Escobedo. "For the subdivision at 508 Stanley Avenue, I live on the property west of the development. My comments: Please have the entire west side of the development construct a permanent six-foot masonry wall. Do not have the house windows on the west side face my bedroom window. And have mature landscaping on the western side." And that is all the public comments we received.
Thank you very much. So we had a motion, do I have a second?
I will second that, with the, I'm seconding it a little grudgingly because I just want to make certain that when this project goes before the city council, it's clear that we're recommending, we want to make certain that correct municipal and state procedures are being followed before the project is included in the deficit area and charged the deficit fees. I'm not asking that to be included in the motion, but I certainly would like it to be on the record and that be presented to the city council when it comes to the hearing.
Are we in discussion?
I have a motion with a condition in mind.
There's a, no, there's a motion on the table. We can have a discussion on that motion.
Okay. So the motion on the table right now is to approve the project with the recommended changes on the conditions that were in the memo that was provided to us. But that does not include, or does it include, the request to remove the obligation to pay into the North Broadway deficiency? Because that is a request coming from the applicant, but it is not included in this motion.
So...
That's why, that's why I want the discussions so that we're very clear on what we're approving.
Right, my understanding of the motion is to approve staff recommendation, which includes the fee.
Okay, thank you.
Can we have a vote?
On the motion to approve with the condition of the fee? Chair Paul?
Yes, approve.
Vice Chair Barbey?
Approved.
Commissioner Barbara?
Approve.
Commissioner McCarron?
Approve.
Commissioner Spear?
Approve.
And Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
And the vote is six to zero to approve the motion.
Thank you. Next item, number three, project number PL 23-0061, comprehensive sign ordinance update.
Thank you, Chairman Paul. So there is no presentation for this, for this item. Simply, as you'll notice in the staff report, the Planning Division is undertaking a repeal and replacement of Article 66, which is the city's sign regulations. The Planning Commission has jurisdiction over sign regulations, and so what we're asking tonight is that the Planning Commission create a subcommittee of no more than three planning commissioners to meet during regular business hours with city staff to go over some of the high-level things to consider as a part of the sign ordinance. We anticipate these meetings happening over the course of one month, so we are hoping to finalize any conversations and recommendations by the end of June and bringing back to the full-body Planning Commission those conversations. And so tonight, it's just the establishment of a subcommittee. And I'm happy to answer any more questions on that.
Any questions of staff?
Question I have for you is, the anticipation of collaboration between that committee and staff, is that something that you anticipate could be remote or in person? The requirement would need to be in person or remote?
I don't think we contemplated that one way or another. I think the anticipation would be that it was in person, but I don't, but there, you know, we could probably accommodate if that's the case. I think the preference would be in person, though.
Sure. Thank you.
Any volunteers?
I'll volunteer.
If you need a second volunteer, I will volunteer.
I was going to volunteer, but I, that's why I asked the question. In the month of June, it might be difficult for me to be there in person, so.
Okay, so I would like to be on it. And, well, that's almost four, I'm not sure.
Who was the fourth?
You, you two, in that terms, you said...
I probably will not be available.
Barry, if you would like to be on it, I will withdraw.
No, no, you go ahead.
So, so we need to be two, but it can be three.
Derek, can you confirm if we've got a council that's currently comprised of six members? Is three acceptable?
Three is acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
So just Rick and Kate?
As much as I would love to volunteer and be a part of this, unfortunately, I'm just, I just don't have the time.
Okay, so Rick and Kate?
Yeah, I actually, I did say I'd volunteer. I was only withdrawing to make, so Barry could have...
So you want to?
Yes.
Oh, there you go.
I preferred Barry to me, but Barry doesn't want to do it.
I'll probably be out of that.
Okay. Okay, three.
All right, thank you, we'll coordinate scheduling for the month of June.
All right, next item is item four, PL 23-0213, the 22, 2023 slash 2024 Planning Division Work Plan. So if you'll give me just one moment, I'm going to go down to the desk down here, I'll leave it. Pardon me, just give me one more moment.
All right, so thank you very much, Commissioners. Adam Feinstone, city planner here. I've got a couple of attachments here, these were both in your staff reports. These are the 2022-23 Planning Commission Work Plan accomplishments. This is shown in attachment one, which we can run through really quickly. And then the other one, which we'll go, get on to next, is the attachment two. That is the 22, I'm sorry, the 2023-2024 Planning Division Work Plan. So a couple of things, first, just to look at the accomplishments and kind of where we're at with things. We had, in the last... Um, we had, uh, in the last calendar, or the last year, basically since June or July last year, when we adopted the prior, uh, work plan, uh, we've accomplished four of the items that were on the list. Um, the Senate Bill Nine implementing ordinance, housing element update, which has been approved by the city council and is currently in HCD's hands, pending certification. Um, we've got our business recovery ordinance and the annual omnibus cleanup. The other items on the list here are lagging a bit. Um, as I've noted in years past, we have, uh, this is a very aggressive list of, of policy work, and we do our best to do what we can to keep up on it. But there are other, there are a number of items that just have not been, have not gotten done. Um, the most pressing is the East Valley specific plan. Uh, that is necessary in order for us to obtain certification from HCD on the, uh, on the, uh, housing element. That is intended to be presented to this body likely the end of June. So in about a month, we'll be bringing back, bringing that to you guys. Um, and subsequent to that, that'll go to council in July, likely. So, uh, there's, there's another, you know, a number of other items on the list here, and, uh, you've seen them, it's been in your packet. So there are a few things here in addition that we did complete over the last year. The, uh, progress reports is kind of an annual thing. The Grape Day Park master plan is something that's very recently been brought before you and then city council. So that was just adopted by council last week. So, um, at the time of publication, I think that was a day, at the time of publication of this report, that was, uh, accurate within one day right there, so... Anyway, you guys have had a chance to look through this. Unfortunately, we have not been able to keep up as we had hoped, but, uh, I think that's kind of been par for the course due to capacity issues over the past few years. Um, I want to turn our attention next to the work plan attachment two here. The first thing that you'll note is that it is now, instead of the Planning Commission Work Plan, it's been retitled the Planning Division Work Plan to more accurately represent the fact that these are tasks undertaken by Planning Division staff, not by the commission, uh, but they're presented to the commission for action, um, either, and for the most part, uh, as an advisory body to city council. So this isn't work necessarily that the planning commission is expected to do, but they, the commission is expected to, uh, provide, um, provide guidance to city council on these items once presented by, uh, once they're presented to you guys by the, uh, by the Planning Division staff. So really, this lays out the, um, the city's, or the city staff's goals and, uh, and priorities for, um, policy work. So, uh, you'll see, most of these are, a lot of them are very similar to the prior, uh, list. Um, for years past, we've been updating and, and, you know, um, supplementing as new things come on. There's some things that, like we've said in the past, just jump up in priority and weren't, we didn't even know about them a year ago, that SB nine implementation ordinance last year was, uh, was just put on the list, but it became number one pretty quickly. Um, so there's, there's things that change, uh, dramatically and quickly. But, um, the list here, it's pretty much, uh, updates to what you've seen before. If you want to run through them, we can. Uh, if there's any questions on specific items here, please let me know. You've had this in your, uh, packet, so if you had a chance to review it and have any questions on it, uh, please, by all means, I'm here to answer. And, um, beyond that, be, uh, it just, it's more of an informational piece for the commission at this point, so they know what's coming.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Uh, I saw a summer of this year date for the East Valley plan.
Yes.
That's a big deal, right?
It is.
So, um, I'm just thinking in terms of that being this huge package, this huge gift for us to dissect after you've worked on it for a long time, will we have some good time to sink our teeth into that big thing?
Yeah, um, it's actually, it's available on the internet right now. I think, I don't remember if I did in, in a couple of months ago, I may have provided that to you guys, but the, uh, EIR that went out for public review, I think at that point I did provide a link to that as well as to the specific plan itself. So it is available at this point.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
If I could, um, make a request of, of planning staff, as this gets closer to where you anticipate this hitting a hearing date for the East Valley specific plan, if, and I don't know if this can be done, but if we can coordinate at least with the, um, Planning Commission members to make sure that we're not going on vacation and happen to hit that particular date?
Please make sure you keep your calendars clear for June twenty-seventh.
And, and there it is. Um, I, I guess if somebody's got a conflict because something's already been booked, so to speak, maybe we speak to Mr. Feinstone.
Okay.
I do not.
Okay, I had, uh, two questions. Um, it says that there's, um, some items that have been moved to a list of potential future work plan tasks. Is that another document?
So I, I do apologize, I, I failed to get into the last couple of sections on here, but you'll notice in addition to the current work plan tasks, the, or work plan elements you see here, there's also then recurring elements, which are the omnibus that we do annually and the, um, annual progress reports that Veronica presents to you. Um, and then ongoing work plan elements, these are primarily implementation actions for the housing element and the climate action plan. And then the, uh, the last one, this part of the list, the potential future work plan elements, these are items that are kind of on the radar and we would love to be able to get to them, but we know that it's just not feasible to throw those onto a two-year plan at this point.
Gotcha, so that's section five. Okay, I wasn't sure if there was a, an additional...
No, I apologize.
That's okay. And then on your cover page, you have, always have this box, city council hearing required, yes or no? And you put no for the hearing required. No, the cover, this cover page.
Oh, correct.
Cover page. But are you going to present, I know it's, the hearing's not required, but are you gonna present it to the city council?
We typically don't at this point. The only time we did was the first year, uh, when there was an item on there that was, um, something that had not been either endorsed by council already or, or, you know, uh, just utilizing staff resources. So we, in, last year we didn't, this year we're not intending to either.
Okay, so I, I would just, I would recommend that you do, just so that the city council knows what you're working on and...
Sure.
But, I mean, obviously, it's up to you.
Yeah, I mean, it is a public document at this point, and that's not a bad idea. I will talk to the city manager about getting that out in front of them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to endorse that. I think that's a really important thing to do. And I just want to, could you scroll down to, maybe it was section three or something? The, uh, well, I just, let's put it this way. I noticed in your, your first set that a number of things that were all climate action plan related had either been deferred or, uh, sort of basically not addressed at all. But then you actually have, is this, is section four ongoing? Is that, are you actually gonna be able to do some of those, do you think?
We are working on them. I can't say where they are.
Okay, so, but they are on your radar, though.
Oh, yeah, the, these are not in the maybe someday section. These are in the, yes, we're, we're doing everything we can to get to them. Uh, some of them are, are gonna be easier than others, some of them just may be a little bit more challenging in order, to get them done based on resources available.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, next item, number five, Building Advisory Board of Appeals. And I don't believe there is a staff report. I believe...
There is not. Uh, in this instance, it's an item that Commissioner Spear had requested to put on the agenda, so I would recommend turning it over to him.
I appreciate that, thank you. I, I don't want to make this long, um, I think it's a simple item, but I'll, I'll give you some context for where it's coming from. When I was interviewing with the mayor and city council for both the commission that we're discussing and for the planning commission role, the mayor asked me a question that I didn't have a good answer to. He said, because I think I said some joke, like I have attended every single meeting of the Building Advisory and Appeals Board since I've been on it all these years, which is zero, by the way. And so that was the joke, is in all of these years I've been on that board, we, I've never met once. So juxtapose that to the mayor's question of, what, what Barry can we do to promote the use of this board? I don't know, was my answer at that time. Then, I've since been approached by several individuals in, within the City of Escondido, one of, being my, one of my neighbors, saying, telling me all about a situation where they had a conflict, they had an issue. And it, it had to go to, uh, legal, legal, um, battle. And I, I asked the question, I said, did you know there's a board to, that you can bring this to at the city and, and not have to go get an attorney, but actually a process in place? They had no idea. And, um, so on one end, we have a board that's never been used. On the other end, we have, uh, citizens of the City of Escondido that are completely oblivious to the resource that's there. This resource is, is, um, set out, laid out in the building code. And the, our city has, has implemented that within our, within our, our laws. And yet it's not being used. My recommendation is that there's a big disconnect in, in the knowledge of our public and being able to use this as a resource, as an important resource. So I suggest that we simply advise the, advise the city council with a recommendation. And that recommendation be that, that every applicant, um, for a project within the city be given a little disclosure, a notice, just informing them of the Building Advisory and Appeals Board. That they be aware of it, much like, you know, I, I picture this, like when you go to sign papers for getting a loan for a house, and they say, well, here's a notice, you need to be aware, these are your rights. Okay, thank you. That's it. I suggest that we do that so that our public, our citizens within this city are aware of that option that's not being taken advantage of. That's the only recommendation I anticipated, this body putting forth for the city council to be aware and, and possibly implement that.
Uh, Barry, have you, has the, is it, is it called a board? Is it actually a board?
It's a board.
Building Appeals Board? Has the board approached city council with this? It seems to me that the first step would be for the board itself to make that recommendation based on the board's experience or non-experience in this case, um, with respect to outreach to, and then maybe sit down with, uh, city staff to discuss what, what would be the best strategy to educate.
That's actually a very good idea.
I, I just think it's better coming from the board itself rather than the planning commission being the one to, those of us who have not actually been involved with, with the board?
So the board has met zero times?
I understand that, but...
And I've never, I've never met any of the other board members.
Right, so perhaps you could call, you could talk to city staff and say, hey, I would like to call a meeting of this board to have this very discussion? Is that possible? I don't know that, to me, that would be the first step in the process.
It's possible, but here are my thoughts on that, is the, really, the only issue is for city council to decide whether they want to announce this to the public. I don't know that it needs to come from a particular board, it just needs to come to city council to deliberate on the issue. So while I think that's a great idea, I don't think there's really a mechan, it, it's a cumbersome mechanism because there's no meeting of that board.
But it strikes me that that could be an agenda item for that board to consider because, I mean, wouldn't the members of that board have, uh, you would need a general discussion of the board members to get there? It's, it strikes me, I don't know.
They, they don't meet, and I don't even, I, I've never spoken with a, a single one. There's never been a meeting.
Right, but my point is, you could call one. You could talk to whoever organizes these meetings, I assume it's the planning division.
No, in this instance, it would likely either be the, it would likely be the building official, although consultation through the city clerk's office would be...
There you go.
I believe where I would start that.
Exactly, that's exactly where I would start. Wherever, whatever the formal process it would be to convene this group, one way or the other.
So, that's an option. It's an option.
That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I, I would suggest, though, that, while, while that's entirely possible, I'm not sure that it matters, as long as, city council's really the one that's gonna decide whether they want to do something about it. I'm just hoping to get it to the city council.
My question is, is this something that really would go to the city council for, for city council action, or is this something that could be done in-house, uh, with, with city staff?
I mean, it, this is...
Is this the kind of issue that would go to that venue and need that kind of direction?
I don't believe so. I would, I would, uh, look to the city attorney's office for any additional input, but my, my thought is that if this is something that, um, that would be appropriate, that the building division could take some action to put something on the application forms or, or somewhere in their, uh, in their media to, you know, to make this, people aware of this. Um, but yeah, I don't know that, again, I guess to, to Commissioner Barber's point, I don't know that it's necessary that it does go to council.
I mean, wouldn't, would they even need board action? I mean, couldn't board member Barry Spear, couldn't he just go to city staff and...
This, make the suggestion.
Yeah, make that recommendation.
This is the type of thing that I think that, uh, our building official could decide, hey, I want, I want to have this statement on our, on our forms.
I, I think Barry could be a subcommittee of one.
So maybe, uh, Commissioner Spear, if you want to, uh, be, I can put you in touch with our building official, you can have a conversation with him and let him know what the, you know, what the desire is, and he can work with you to, you know, to make a decision on what to do with that. And if it's not to your liking, then by all means, you can bring that up the ladder and talk to the director or city manager's office on it.
Okay.
Of course, have the option to go make a public comment at a city council meeting, you know?
Okay, that's another option as well. I was just looking for the shortest path to get city council to say, yeah, this is a good idea, let's do it.
Yeah, but I agree that you might not need city council to say yes in order to get it done. Right. The building official can make the decision on his own.
Sure.
And, and, you know, Doug, follow up on that, it almost seems like it doesn't necessarily need to be on the application itself, it could be an extra handout when that application gets filled out, or, or a building permit gets issued, or, or they're in, probably at the application stage, that's probably most appropriate. Hey, here's an extra sheet of paper. If, if there's an issue, you know, this is, here's the process by which you can go through.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's some creativity in how that could be done. I just think at this point, it's, it's, it's a lack of inform, information that gets there, so...
Uh, and, and it does seem that the most expedient way may be just going straight to the building official, and I'm sure Mr. Feinstone can help bridge that gap, if there is any.
Okay, let me try that route first and see what happens. That's, I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure. I'll be out of the office for the next few days, but if you wanted to email him directly, I will, but if you wanted to email him directly, it's D, it's Doug Moody, D-M-O-O-D-Y, at escondido.org.
Thank you.
Sorry, that sounded really bad.
Be out of the office for a year.
I'm here to help you, but not really.
I'm just sitting here volunteering you away, right? Apologies.
Okay, everybody. Um, next item is future agenda items. Uh, that's for the, uh, any planning commissioners who would like to ask, ask, ask to put something on an agenda. Okay, seeing none. Uh, oral communications. We have some people still in the audience. If you have something you'd like to say, I give you three minutes. Okay. Pass on that. Planning Commissioners Report. Planning Commissioners Report.
Is this the time for our comments?
Yep.
Okay. Couple of things. Um, one, I think our new chairman, Rick Paul, uh, should be recognized by this board for the award that he got from, uh, the city council. I guess it was about a month ago now. But, and I don't recall exactly what it was, but I was very impressed at the, at the time when I was watching the hearing. Um, but he should be recognized for, for city council giving him an award for the work that he does for the community. But please clarify the, the name of the award.
You're gonna embarrass me. Um, no, because I don't remember what it's called.
But what was it for? I think I remember what it was. What was it for?
I want to say Volunteer of the Year, except there was five of us, so it can't be Volunteer of the Year. But for community, my, my, my efforts in the community.
Yeah. It was, it was all the work that, that, um, the chair's been doing over the many, many years and his volunteerism throughout the, throughout the community. So I...
Thank you, thank you.
I was really impressed.
All right, anybody else?
And then one other thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Macaro invited us all to go to the, uh, Mother's Day tour in the historic district. I've lived here all my life. I've lived here all my life, and I've never gone on one of these tours. But I did go and attend. If you didn't, highly recommend it. It was, it was a very, very nice day. So, thank you for letting us know.
So happy for the ones who could come next year. Whoever didn't, the invitation will be extended again. But it's, it's actually amazing to see what Escondido has in our neighborhood, right? Yeah. It's remarkable.
All right. Okay. I, I got at least one. So, on the public hearing tonight, the environmental impact report, this Exhibit C was not in the set of environmental documents. So, I went, actually was, went there first before I read the, the staff report, and I was like, where, where the heck is the mitigation and monitoring plan? And I couldn't find it. And I was gonna say, hey, how come you guys didn't do this? And then I found it in the staff report. So, I think you should put this document in there. In both places, correct. Okay. And, oh, and I did want to ask also, I missed, I did, I've missed a meeting. I missed one meeting, and thank you guys for voting for me for chair anyway, even though I missed a meeting. What's the next step for that senior community that got turned down? The Reed Road Assisted Living Facility. So, they have, they have appealed that item, the applicants appealed that denial to city council. They're working on some, some, putting in some information together, and that'll likely go to council in the next month or two. Okay. Cool. Thank you. City Planners Report. Just giving you the heads up that we have the East Valley Specific Plan coming your way, likely Jan, June 27th, I believe, was the date I stated. So, clear your calendars. The document is available online at this point already to review, to read, review the environmental document as well. I do not believe we're gonna be holding a meeting on the 13th of June. I will inform, I will let you guys know for sure in the coming week or so. But the East Valley Specific Plan on the 27th will be the big one coming up. All right. And then I had one question about that, too. The private development projects, you had this Bear Valley Parkway Wireless Facility. Why would that come to us? So, a wireless communications facility that is in a residential zone requires a conditional use permit for the macro sites, though, you know, what you think of as the old-school...
Right.
Fake tree or whatever else it might be. The small cells that you typically see that are all on the, you know, the new rage that are on light poles and the like, those do not get to, uh, commissioned in any way, shape or form. So, this is a resident? Correct.